Here, so I will call the SLUG board meeting to order. Today is Monday, July twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Call order at six oh one. We are meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We are on Zoom. On Zoom, live streamed for local fellow access and being recorded for YouTube posting. And before we get into the agenda, can we stand for the pledge, please? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have the Treasury warrant, uh, twenty five dash twenty eight and twenty five dash P W twenty eight, as well as twenty six dash two and twenty six dash P W two. Um, no, there were just a couple of, um, larger invoices that were paid on this to finish out the work done on the library building. So Donna had posted those on this warrant. They were a little bit outstanding, we weren't aware of them. So we got those in on this warrant, so just for folks to be aware of that in here. Um, and I believe I saw, uh, what you said, assessment as well. So that was another, um, large one as well. Is there anything else of note that you're aware of? Okay. Um, if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve Treasury warrant twenty five dash twenty eight and twenty five dash P W twenty eight, twenty six point two and twenty six point P W two.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any other discussion? All right, we'll call Alex.
Hold on. Second, I.
One minute.
Matt's in.
Ledger, I.
Yep. Uh, and we have just one set of meeting minutes from our July seventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting. Any discussion or I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the meeting minutes of July seventh, two thousand and twenty five, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Okay, Alex.
Hold on. Second, I.
One minute.
Matt's in.
And Ledger.
Was anybody here for public comment?
Carol Benoit, Turkey Hill Road, um, just I've been wanting to bring this up with somebody. The thirty five mile an hours, um, posted speed limit sign has been down in front of the Rufus Putnam Lodge for about three months, four months. Um, I saw that it had been fault felt, it was it was laying on the side, um, along their banking. And so somebody has removed it because it's been mowed and taken care of. Um, it's no longer there, but I'm just concerned about people that I know it's I know it turns to thirty five, but if people don't know, they could be going forty five through town, so just.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Tamika, are we able to follow up with Chris?
Carol, you said it's near the Rufus Putnam Lodge?
It's the one, it was right in front of the Rufus Putnam Lodge.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
Thank you for that, because I I'm like you, I know that it goes, so I just automatically slow down. I haven't even noticed that it was missing, so thank you for.
They all did tonight, well, there was a cop behind us too, but.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else for public comment? I can't see anything on Zoom. If we have anybody? I'm gonna guess, okay. Um, all right, communications, member comments, announcements, and town administrator update. Um, for a couple of dates on my side, we have the, um, painted pair painted chairs project. Um, so the library is holding a raffle for the chance to win, um, some of the chairs that have been painted by local artists. They are on display at the library right now. Uh, the drawing will take place in December. The raffle tickets are a dollar each and the proceeds will go to benefit the library. So stop in and see those chairs and, um, purchase your raffle tickets. Uh, the Rutland Mooseocks takeover day is Sunday, September seventh. Uh, tickets are available now and there's a survey that's available until July twenty fifth for residents to nominate participants for the pregame ceremonies. Um, information on that, um, and links are available on the homepage of the town website. Uh, we have first quarter real estate taxes are due Monday, August fourth. And, um, after a little bit of a hiatus, we were gonna be, um, publishing the monthly newsletter again, starting in August. So keep an eye out, um, on the town website and social media will be sharing that newsletter again. Uh, and we did have, um, some notifications go out just today. Um, but for anybody that hasn't seen them yet, there will be work scheduled on Brittonal Drive to install some new infrastructure for two new house lots that are going in there. Um, that work is going to require Brittonal to be closed, um, which will take place from July twenty eighth through Friday, August first, um, Monday, July twenty eighth through August first, from seven A M. to three P M. Um, there will be an officer there directing traffic. Um, and again, we did send out reverse nine one ones to, um, area residents, um, as well as social media, um, posts and website alerts, um, just with that, so, um, just be aware of that. Does anybody else have any comments that they would like to make?
I'd just like to add, thanks to the public safety people for all of their work over the Fourth of July. There were a couple of incidents that happened that really needed to be reacted to, and they did a fine job, so hats off to public safety.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, dude, I will turn it over to you for updates.
Uh, last week we had the trash hauler, um, bid conference. Uh, I guess it had it started prior to my getting here. Uh, there were three communities that were involved. Um, we met with approximately four or five vendors. Um, they had questions about the R F P. Um, you know, the the basic thrust is it's gonna be a flat rate per residence, X amount of dollars. Uh, we're looking for two different options, one for a week of, uh, trash and recycle, or then a week, and then the following recycling, they're gonna give us bids for that. We need to set up a revolving account, uh, because I guess there had been an agreement that we were gonna do the billing for that. And, uh, the plan at this point is to have, uh, the town pay the vendor a monthly payment, and then the, uh, revolving account would go on a some either water sewer, real estate tax bill, uh, for the, uh, a residence assessment on that, uh, portion of the, uh, of the R F P, so. Um, the S R F, I met with a representative of Weston Sampson. Uh, she stressed that the program is highly competitive and that our chances of actually getting a grant under that program are between one and five percent. Um, most of the grants, you know, essentially at this point, ninety percent of them are related to P F A S, which is right now a real big issue in the Commonwealth, and that's where they're putting the money, so. I'm not sure that's gonna be a viable source now or in the future, but there might be other potential, uh, grant programs out there that would give us same benefit. You know, a long time ago, they used to be farmers home loaned and they did all kinds of things in rural communities, and that might still be available, I'd look into it. We had a department head meeting last Wednesday. Uh, we just had basically a round robin discussion, uh, around the table, just what was going on in the individual departments and issues they're facing, as well as, uh, I asked them a question regarding what they were looking for, uh, from the new town administrator in terms of attributes and qualities. We also sent, uh, an email or, uh, a memo to all the boards and committees for their input. And the one thing I I heard at least was about opening up the lines of communication between everybody and having people talk to each other and, you know, building, uh, a rapport among the different and various sundry departments, boards, and committees. Uh, I did talk to Representative Ferguson regarding the C O A earmark. It's still not yet been set aside as a P A C, you know, a private, prior, um, earmark that would be carried into the future fiscal year. Um, she had spoken to Senator Durant, and it's gonna be added to the next appropriations bill. And at that point, uh, we will be filling out the forms and working on getting the, uh, uh, the bathroom, uh, upgraded to a handicapped accessible bathroom and, uh, door openers for the council and Asian building. Uh, the bids are going out, uh, eight thirteen for, uh, paving, catch basins, and chemicals. Uh, tomorrow I'm going on a tour of the Wachusett Regional School. Uh, all the T A.'s are participating in that from the area. Uh, I got a notice from Green Communities regarding the, I guess we had gotten a five thousand dollar tech assistance grant to help us write a grant application, as well as prepare our annual report. Um, the woman who contacted me was Gloria Agusu, but she also referenced Kelly Brown as somebody I've actually worked with in two other communities, so I know Kelly. And I guess the intent is just to talk about opportunities that are available in the Green Communities, uh, program for Rutland. Uh, on Wednesday, we're gonna have, uh, our kickoff meeting for the energy aggregation, um, aggregation project with good energy. Uh, basically, the purpose of the meeting is to set up a plan and how to implement that plan within a reasonable period of time of letting people, you know, participate in the, the town, uh, electrical bid. Uh, once again, I had worked with the gentleman who was coordinating this in Free Towns. Um, I got an email from Woodward and Curran, Patrick Compton, uh, regarding the secondary water supply source study, and he wants to give me an update and status on that. It's the first I've heard of was today, actually, so I'm gonna hear him out and, um, hear what they have to say and find out what the conclusions are and whether there's something I can bring it back to the board and see if it's something that we wanna pursue further. And finally, the, uh, T A. recruitment proposals are due on Friday, I'm gonna be here for that. And we did receive one in, uh, from the Collins Center. They're a state agency and they don't technically have to, um, you you don't have to have a bid process. You can engage in, uh, an intermunicipal or intergovernmental agreement without even putting it out to bid. So we did get that proposal and as part of the mix, and I would suggest probably taking a look at that at the same time, so. I got the forms all done for the, uh, uh, recruitment assessment, as well as the criteria we're gonna use to, um, evaluate the bids, and we're gonna take it from there.
Is it just the one so far that we've?
We just got that one, but I'm sure we're gonna get a couple more. And what I would suggest we do at this point is that we open the proposal part of it, give it to all the board members, have them next week review, all of them, we'll come in, we'll invite them in for an interview. You can ask them the questions or or do the rating on it and end up with a score. And at that point, um, you know, we'll have interviewed them, we will have reviewed their proposal, we have scored them. Uh, the board can then open the cost of the price proposals and see how much each one, uh, will cost us of the two. You know, the, the one that you think is the best might be the highest, it may be the lowest, you don't know, until you evaluate, you assess a score, and then you, uh, you award the bid, so.
We'll have access to that for the next meeting, for the fourth?
That was the, that was the intent was.
Okay.
To get them in this Friday, give them to you guys, uh, over the weekend or Monday. Take a look at each of the proposals, you won't see the price proposal because it'll still be sealed. And then I'll give you a reason to take a look at the rating sheet, but you can do the rating sheet while we're doing the interview also, or do it however you wanna do it, as long as they're rated in accordance with the criteria. That's it.
Any more questions for David?
David, you you're doing a walkthrough at Wachusett, all the T A.'s are going there, what is the purpose of that?
I I have no idea, I I was invited, I I assumed it was something they do every year, or?
Is it the high school?
High school, yeah.
Never known that to be done, okay.
I noticed two of the names for T A., so I just made an assumption the other five people the same thing, so.
If I may, I know, if I may, through the, I know the Wachusett, um, administration now has been doing monthly meetings with all the administrators and managers. Um, and so I believe, and I don't know for sure, but because some of the ticket, big ticket items, uh, repairs were for the high school, um, in the current, I believe in the current budget and potentially capital needs coming forward, my guess is just to get it on the radar and show, um, the adminis- only from the administrator side, um,
Yeah, what they're gonna be presented with, the potential capital projects in the future.
I don't know for sure, it's not uncommon that over the summer, um, the the facilities subcommittee does walkthroughs of all the town buildings, so it wouldn't surprise me if, when they do decide to do Rutland, that you're invited to.
Yeah, I actually already have been invited to that, it's a couple weeks in advance.
So that's probably the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, if no more questions, we can move into old business. Um, we only have one item, which is to, um, discuss the municipal lots, um, draft policy that we had talked with Director Koloski last meeting regarding, um, leaving and storing of of municipal vehicles on in-town property lots. And again, the recommendation is to have a couple of spaces in the back parking lot here at the library, but also having the policy outlined and then the application for, um, people to apply to have that. Um, there was only one other additional modification that I had sent to Tamika, which is to capture, um, personal vehicle information, like your make, model, and color, again, just so that we would have that on file if they leave their personal vehicles in place of, in the lots, um, while they're using their state vehicles, um, or whatever it may be, so. Anybody else have any other comments or questions on this, or?
Yeah, I have a question, uh, has just been run by Chris Koloski, and what does she think?
So you spoke to him at the last meeting, he reviewed the entire draft and was comfortable with it as is?
Even with the change for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So if we don't have any other questions or comments on that, I will, um, entertain a motion to adopt the policy for use of municipal lots for parking of state vehicles as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All right, Alex?
Hold on. Second, I.
One minute.
Matt's in.
And Ledger, I. All right, um, Carrie and Ruth, are you expecting any of the other trustees? It's just the two of you?
Just us.
Okay, um, if the board is amenable to, just since Carrie and Ruth are here taking the, um, discussion of the library warrant articles, we can allow Carrie and Ruth to continue with their day. Any concerns with that? Okay. Um, so this is the, um, topic where we had the trustees in earlier. There are concerns with the cuts to the purchase services, um, and supplies line items to the library budget, uh, since that is where the library pays, um, their utilities from, and concerns with not being able to cover those costs with the, the current budget that they have. So one of the, um, potential ways of assisting with that was review of the outstanding special articles pertaining to library work to see if, what are the status of those and is there any potential consideration for reappropriating funds from any of those articles, um, to the library budget? Obviously, we can't do any of that for a town meeting, but I just wanted to bring the information before the board. Um, I had gone through, it's in your packets, there's three of them. Um, the first article is pertaining to library doors repair, this was from November of two thousand and twenty two. Um, this is one that was interesting to me, is the original, um, project was to replace the doors at the library. I didn't get any information on which doors specifically, if it was the front doors down here.
They actually, both the front and the back door.
And the back door, okay.
But I think that the money that was allocated was.
That was my understanding.
It was way under.
Under what it needed to be.
Yes.
So some money that was expended from this was for repairs to at least?
To another door.
Yeah, to another door, not even to one of those.
Not even to the ones we were talking about, no.
Okay. Um, so this is a little bit of a side note for me, where I have concerns that the funds that are allocated for a specific project at town meeting that are voted on by residents are not being used for the explicit purpose that they were voted for. Um, I want, not to say that I didn't want the repairs to be done, however, for me, transparency, it needs to be done in the right way. Um, so that's a little bit of a side note, but that's, that's the status of this particular article. Do you happen to know, are there any plans for additional repairs at this time for any of the doors?
I actually feel like that money was something from somewhere else that we, that when Joe Buckley Buckley was here, he had out, he said we should move that into looking at the front doors.
Okay.
So I believe that was something, that's why that transfer was, I think it was money that had been allocated for something else directly for the library, but it was reallocated elsewhere.
Okay, interesting, we'll have to.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a little paper trail that you can find.
Okay. Um, but I think needless to say, there's no plans right now for any replacement doors for them.
No, we actually did have somebody come in and look at those front doors and the back door.
Okay.
And the door professional said they were good, so.
Okay. So do you see any concern with this one?
Well, I I did talk to Chris about this, and he did use some of the money to correct another door that had some issues.
Okay.
So he is concerned that if we turn all of this money into money we can use right now to pay, uh, utility bills, when something happens, we won't have anything to fall on. And and we kind of feel the same way.
Okay.
I mean, uh, the board can certainly, Ruth can speak for the board, but.
Right, okay.
Well, I think we also understand that that's not what the money was appropriated for, so. I mean, we certainly have capital needs.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, whether, and I I don't know what's left in this particular account would actually cover any of what we really need anyway, I mean, that's what would happen with the door in the first place. That they're, there's, they're more costly than the amount.
Than what's in this, that's one, than what's left, okay. Um, the next one is the ten thousand dollar appropriation from same November twenty two for the library landscape. Um, it's my understanding that this was kind of intended to, um, beautify the the grounds around the library, but also go towards establishing some, something of a maintenance, um, fund outside of this, a budget, um, for continuing to to do the the maintenance on the landscaping. Um, it hasn't been used for anything outside of some bark mulch. Uh, so this, we're what, three years into this one, just about? Um, just some bark mulch, and, um, again, this is my understanding that even some of this was utilized for bark mulch for non-library areas as well.
I can't speak to that.
Um, but my, so I don't, I I know this is exactly what this was for, you know, the the residents voted to update and, you know, fix the landscaping. Um, I guess my question is, how come, what was the factor that has prevented that from really happening? Do you have any?
I I can't say, I imagine it had something to do with the limited personnel at the D P W.
Okay.
That would be my guess.
Okay.
Because we we really, we do it in partnership with them, I mean, the funds come through the library for supplies and materials, but we don't have the labor.
Okay.
And it didn't really extend to hiring an outside company to do the whole.
To do everything, okay. Uh, and then the last article is from November of two thousand and twenty one. Um, there's a pretty specific explanation in here. This was, um, appropriated for, uh, repairs to the roof. As my understanding that the repairs here have, for this particular issue, have been completed. I know there were other repairs because the work for this project was not necessarily done the way it should have been, so additional repairs had to be done, but, um, for the work for this particular article, that is done, so that, um, current balance in that article is just over twenty two thousand dollars for that. So there's, between those, there's the twenty two thousand, there's the just under ten thousand, and then the remaining thirty eight, just under thirty nine hundred, um, between those, those three articles. I would open it up for the board for questions or discussion if they have any concerns or thoughts on, or questions for the trustees on reappropriating? Any or some portion of?
I have a question, I'm gonna start, if, I'm gonna start with the third one, library building and roof. Is there anything that you need done at the library in guarding the building and the building and roof that could be used for this twenty two thousand dollars?
Um, it's, they just did that roof again last fall.
September.
Last September.
Is there anything else in the building, though, too, not just the roof?
Well, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot. Um, there's a lot of structural things outside the building. Carpets haven't been replaced since we opened the building back in two thousand and one. We haven't repainted anything, we haven't, you know, just downstairs meeting rooms, but we haven't really done a lot of stuff upstairs unless we've had a disaster and the insurance company comes in and helps us with that, unfortunately.
Well, the reason I ask the question is I'm going back to what you said, Chris said, about if we get rid of this and then something happens, we don't have the money to take care of that stuff. So if we, that's what I'm saying, is there anything that needs to be done that this twenty two could be used for?
Separate from what we submitted in the capital, in the capital plan, in terms of?
Well, I know you had windows and stuff like that, right, in the capital plan? So could that go to that?
Well, I know last year we had issues with two of the furnaces on this building. There were five furnaces in this building. Yeah, all been recently replaced within the last five years, I think. But one, last year we had an issue with one that was upstairs and one that was downstairs, and it cost us about seven thousand dollars additionally from, so that, you know, there's always something we can use this month.
So there's two, there's two boilers left that you feel needs to be?
Well, they're all actually, they've all been replaced, so I feel confident about them, but we really don't have a maintenance schedule, really don't have a budget for a maintenance schedule to have a company come in and make sure we change the filters and make sure we address the things that need to be addressed. So generally, when I call these people, it's because it's not working, it's making a funny noise, we're not feeling the heat, we're not, so, you know, it's usually when there's some kind of serious problem with it, when they come in, which, you know, one to four thousand dollars.
Would, I don't know if it's possible. Would you be willing to, if you could, reappropriate this to like a maintenance fund for that you have that to take care of some things?
I I actually think that might be a great idea.
The reason I say that is, this is really too small for a capital fund, because it's twenty five thousand dollars. So it has to be allocated some other way, it can't be a capital asset, just as a thought.
Right. It would be helpful for the library to have some kind of a maintenance fund to address big ticket items when they come around the corner, because they generally do.
Yeah. The concern with that is, is it gonna continuously get funded each year? We don't have maintenance funds for any of our.
Right.
Town buildings, so it's, it could get funded with the balance here, but once that's run out, then what?
If I may.
You've got twenty two thousand dollars available right now. Uh, or do you, or do you spend that on the problem we have right now?
If I, if I may, I don't, is it poss- and maybe it's not possible, but because oftentimes the free cash allocations are done at a special town meeting, and they're usually for specific projects, for a building or a, a program or or something, is it possible that as we're going through and clearing these out, rather than totally, totally, like, can we make them, and David, this might be a question for you, can you make the article more broad and say that this is leftover money that was allocated at previous town meetings for the library? That this is leftover money that was allocated at previous town meetings for the library, so we're going to give it essentially. To library to to supplement their current budget and or for capital repairs. And then do that even for like the building on Glenwood and if DPW has stuff. Something that is a little bit more encompassing, not just as a default all the time, because I think there is very much value.
Craft that.
But, and I don't know if that would address some of this, Jen, and what I think you're trying to do is clear this to go towards their. Um, purchase services, so that then they would be able to potentially. Have electricity, but we don't know what those costs are going to be yet, I don't think we know, depending on where the electric market goes. Um, but also that if there is an emergency. Door repair that's needed, or because I know DPW has expressed concerns that for, in a budget that is so tight this year, because we didn't go for the override. That there's no, there's very little wiggle room for even emergency repairs that may need to happen, and I know a couple of years ago, there was issues with the li, or the. Elevator, um, and so if there's a way that we can encompass. These articles that had pertain to the library that town meeting o- over iterations had approved for for essentially the building. Different aspects of the building that then essentially it goes back to the building, whether it's purchase services or repairs or whatever. Um, might be a little bit more of the. Providing some latitude to to do. Cover everything, because I think I would love to see a capital. Fund for the entire town, and I think it becomes a very slippery slope if we do it for one building and not the others.
Oh, I, I agree.
And so.
I I think we need a a more holistic plan for all of the town properties for some sort of a maintenance program and. Some way of funding it, not that we have um, much of an option right now. But again, for the, for these particular ones, I, the focus was more just what are some ideas we have that we can get back the library, some of their. Their lost budget, um, and this is just one of the items on there, so again, it doesn't have to be everything from all of these articles. Uh, even if there's cases, like I said, I, even with the doors, you know. It's, it's not the original intended use, so even if that gets reappropriated to a a door maintenance fund or just a general maintenance fund. So that there's more transparency, that people can understand what it's going towards, still going to the library, it's still going towards library maintenance. It gives you a little bit more leeway on what to use that for. But yeah, for me, it's, it's an, it's a transparency thing where the funds that are voted for in these special articles should be used. For the intended purpose and not try and use it, you know, wiggle through some. Some way of utilizing it in a, in a means that it wasn't intended for. So again, it doesn't have to be, um, you know, all of this, it doesn't, not all of it has to go to the library's purchase services, there's, you know, some more discussion that can be. Um, can be had, um, did, did you get a copy of the the balances for the?
I did, Chris gave them to me.
So, and again, it's not something we have to decide tonight, I just wanted to bring it before the war because we had, did have this discussion, nothing can be reappropriated until. Town meeting anyways, um, so maybe, you know, as if the trustees meet, you could discuss the balances that are here. See if you have any thoughts as to how you would like to. How you see it best being utilized for what your needs are in the coming budget year and send that information back to the board for. Consideration and, you know, future warrant articles for reappropriation.
Okay.
If that would be agreeable, does the board have any?
I think, um, we're really, um. Hoping uh, to reach the minimum appropriation we need for the library board of commissioners in terms of what. The towns, um. Author, what, how much money we get from the the town, which is about uh, two hundred, it's, I think we're what, twelve thousand?
Two ninety five, it's two ninety five, I mean, it will be two.
Eighty two or something. So, um, if we hit the two ninety five number, we would not need a waiver. Uh, to get certification and we would be entitled to state aid, which does give us money to use in operating the library. So that's, you know, probably our first thing we'd like to accomplish.
Just to get that back for your budget.
Right, it isn't what we requested in the first place, but it's what we could. Um, work within, I mean, we do have state aid and, um, some, you know, the gift account that we can access. Cause I think our, uh, the other item that was affected was, it it, it's a line item for supplies, but it's really what we purchased books with. So, um, that was another area of concern for us, but. The two ninety five would be workable.
Carol Pnoit Turkey Hill, um, unless something has changed since Thursday night, do we not have quite a significant bill for a roof? For the library?
No, there, the invoices that we had, um, we confirmed with Donna that there, the ARPA funds were still there.
Correct, but this is already an article that we could take money out of. To pay for a good chunk of that invoicing. And then ARPA money is there for something else, or to pay the remainder of the bill.
No, that original allocation, it's all part of that, the whole original two hundred and ninety two thousand that was allocated from ARPA for that. Public safety and library roof project. So it was already there, we just had to pay those bills with the remaining funds from that allocation.
ARPA money cannot be reappropriated.
Once it's allocated.
Yeah, once it's.
I think not at this point, I think everything had to be committed and extended by the end of this, it had to be committed by last year and extended by this year, I believe.
Completed by this year, that's what I saw.
So does that sound okay with you? We'll, we'll continue the conversation, let us know what you're thinking with. You know, the funds that we have that we're looking at here and we can bring that back and discuss it a little bit more?
Certainly.
Sounds good, and it has to be settled before the warrant is completed for the potential November meeting.
Before we, yeah, we need to have the, what's the, you have any idea on the dates?
Usually the warrant opens in like mid-September and then they meet in October to finalize it, like late October finalize it, so if you just kind of keep a general. That general timeframe.
I think the state aid forms do usually that first Friday in October. So if we have a general idea of what it looks like, we can make adjustments on those forms, which always looks favorably. For us and for the board of library commissioners to make their decisions.
And so if, if I may, just to recap, in the outstanding articles, there's roughly thirty five thousand eight hundred, just a little bit under. All combined, what you're asking for is to essentially thirteen thousand ish. To be added back into your budget from this. And then if, I don't know if the board would be amenable, I would be amenable to it for consideration, trying to clear all the other outs. One them all into one for like a library. Fund, whether it's repairs or or something, and I don't know how specific we wanna do, but because they're all for repairs, but again, to Harry's point, I. Like that idea, but I think it's also a slippery slope as to how we do it, and so, um, I don't know the wording or whatever, but.
I'm sure we can figure that out, and have some kind of a mechanism where i- if they're planning to do work and they were gonna take money out of that account. They could submit something to the board saying, this is, we're gonna use X amount of dollars, this is what we're planning to do with it. Is this okay, we approve it and.
Yeah, I I certainly, I I agree with you, Leah, I I. Allowing them to to use it for what you feel is is more important, um. Would be my ideal, as long as it goes to the library, since that was the original appropriation. My concern is just with the articles, just having some sort of specific, more specific, if ideally parameters around intended use. So that we can have a way of tracking, is that done, and is there, you know, any sort of time that needs to be. You know, we've talked about this before with special articles, is there some sort of um. Timeframe that needs to be put on these, so that we don't have special articles that are out there for ten years.
Well, I think our financial policies, which we totally didn't adhere to at all, but say that every year, whatever is unspent is cleared. Um, unless it's a multi-year project or something, so that's why I think it would take some creative wording and also. I mean, obviously it would be a town meeting vote, but to encompass the intent of the original articles. Also knowing that the building has a lot of needs and is one of our, I would argue is our most. Heavily utilized by the entire population of the community, um.
Paul, any thoughts or? Anything else you wanna add?
So, you would be agreeable if we could do that? Kinda letting you decide, and again, we're not talking a huge amount of money here. But it's stuff that will help get you back up to where you need to be and take care of some of sundry stuff.
As we, and we could provide detail, I mean, we're particularly concerned about the exterior of the building, it's had really no attention. It's significant, significant attention in twenty five years, and there's places where we're concerned about water coming in and, you know, the paint is. Has come off, so, um, but, you know, we could get some professionals to come and give us an estimate about and. Prioritize the work based on what monies are available.
So roughly, I'm hearing like fifteen ish, maybe reappropriating to the budget, to their budget in the fall, and then the remaining twenty cleared to one. One article or or something, ballpark.
Why, why can't we use the twenty two to make repairs to water damage in the exterior of the building now?
Because that wasn't part of the scope of the original.
I mean, improvements to the building and roof is a result of water damage.
Yeah, but the scope of work is clearly outlined in. In the warrant that was voted on at the time. That's, that's, that's my whole thing, Alex, is the the transparency and making sure that the money that's here is is utilized for its intended purpose. And if it's, if there's leftover, then, you know, do what we can, it either clears to a free cash, like you said, Leah, if the project's done, or reappropriate for. You know, another related purpose, but I think, you know, this is the money the residents approved, and if the project's done, I think the residents should have another say. And where the remainder of that money. Gets utilized.
And and if we, if we try to reappropriate this for another specific project. And the project costs more than you have. Or costs less, now we have to go back to reappropriating again, and I just, I like to keep it clean.
Yeah. Alright, so it sounds like there's some, some general agreement from the board as far as, um, you know, reappropriation considerations here, so we'll let you and the trustees. Review and just confirm what your um, ideal plan would be for the funds that is left over and. We'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Let's go back to the top, uh, for the town administrator's salary. Um, this one, uh, again, just as we're going through and we'll be doing the consulting firm interviews. Um, at our next meeting, I wanted to start having a discussion with the board on what we were thinking as far as. A a salary or a range for the next permanent town administrator. Provided feedback. As far as, um, I think expectations, obviously, things might differ depending on experience and. You know, what we ideally are looking for in a candidate, um, but I wanted to just start the conversation here, uh, cause we're gonna have to. Have some further discussions on funding that. Especially as we start talking through, um, more budget-related items starting in the fall. Your initial thoughts?
Are you looking for comment right now?
Yeah, uh, just as far as anything, I I mean, I, for for me, I, we are limited as far as resources. Um, however, again, taking David's feedback into consideration. I think even what we had the the prior town administrator at seems to be on the lower side, um. So again, depending on the the candidate that we want to get in here with the amount of experience and what their expectations would be for. The amount of work that we need them to do. In our, our bylaw.
So I'm, I'm just gonna throw this out. If we take Boston's salary. And we say increase at five percent a year, just for cost of building, we're up to a minimum of one forty. In terms of what we got, if we look at just the two years increase, so. To me, I I I don't know, we shouldn't even go lower than one forty at this point, but that's up to the board. I mean, I I I don't think we can offer a hundred ninety eight thousand dollars.
I I would agree.
No. You could do it up to X amount of dollars, like a hundred and fifty, and then if you have a candidate that doesn't have the experience. But shows a lot of enthusiasm, has the right skill set and is willing to take a little less than you could. You know, slot it at one thirty five, one forty, if you have somebody has a little bit more experience, one forty, one fifty is gonna be. That's gonna be the threshold.
I think that's, if I may, I think that's what we did previously, was set up to a certain dollar amount, um, and.
Latitude to flex it, if, depending upon the quality of the candidate.
Right. And in my conversations with. Previous administrators and even existing administrators, salary means a lot, there's a lot more to it than salary, and so. Um, I think, you know, I I know we're in a competitive s- season also for town administrators. Um, I mean, even just within central, the small rural communities of central mass, but just throughout the state also. Um, so. You have probably, I would rely on you a little bit more for the better sense as to the the market rate, um. But.
I I think that, um. I can give you that advice, but I think the company that you hire will have, you know, it will be connected to that marketplace. And will be able to give you a better sense of what the range would be given. Uh, the size of the community, the, you know, the, basically the profile, where do we fit? You know, comparably to other communities with the same size, same E Q V, the whole nine yards. I think that it realistically, it's, it's in the one forties, one fifties.
And I guess for me, that's like, I would say the one, like in my head, keep it at one fifty as we're looking towards the budget, you know. Where we need to be for upcoming, but also those increases that should occur.
Yeah.
As well, so that we stay competitive, because I think we do ourselves a disservice sometimes also by constantly. Not constantly, but oftentimes hiring low and then being hesitant or not doing any sort of adjustments. So then when we do have to hire again, we're totally off the mark because we haven't stayed competitive. And so even though we may be losing longevity or experience. The the market is far, traveling much farther and faster, especially municipal world, you know.
This is an interesting market, actually, you know, over five years, it's it's really. Really changed, and I think it's because all of the old timers like myself got out and the younger people, they. You know, they're they're coming in, it's an entirely different group of people with different expectations and. You know, they they work as hard as everybody else, but the thing is, is that they have certain expectations of. What they want to be and what they wanna do and having that life, you know, work balance.
I mean, and for me, I. I I think experience is gonna be a a big thing for me for a a permanent TA, you know, I I think being on the lower end. I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of the candidates we get are those that are trying to get into the job market and are starting out fresh. So they're willing to take a a lower salary and then we get into the cycle of, well, we have a candidate that's in here for a couple of years and then moves on to a higher paying job. I I personally think that we need somebody that has a good amount of experience to to come in and to help out with, uh, you know, a lot of the needs that we have. Uh, and that's gonna require a little bit of a higher salary, like Leah was saying, a little bit more competitive.
But they, I mean, the changeover could happen no matter what, I mean.
Yeah.
We could have the perfect person and they leave in two years or a year even, I mean, it's. We can't control that.
The one year is all you need, though, if you're eh, trying to break into the market and, you know, have your first job, you see that one year. As soon as you have that one year, you can move, you know, you can say, oh, just, it's not an ideal situation, but it's gonna get me in the door. I'm gonna get experience in a year, a year and a half, that can go out and make twenty, thirty, fifty thousand dollars more.
But, and that's the case in any industry, really, I mean, once you get into a job title, you're there for a year, a year and a half, and you can, you start getting old, I mean.
You know, that's not an ideal situation, no, cause all that historical knowledge that you get by somebody staying four, six, eight years is gone. You know, every two years, you're retraining and retooling.
Well, and there's, I, if I may, I think there is a huge expense, we've, we see this huge expense to to the turnover, whether it's the. On the knowledge side, but also whether we're doing it as a search firm or an internal process, there's the. On the knowledge side, but also whether we're doing it as a search firm or an internal process, there's the. Onboarding, offboarding from payroll and benefits as well as the cost for a firm or not and time and investment and and everything like that. And.
There's still no way you can control that.
No, 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 no. I I'm not saying that at all, but I'm just trying to take into consideration what all the factors are for people leaving.
Yeah.
And working to.
Avoid them.
Or be mindful of it. So we're realistic with ourselves.
Yeah.
Relative to other towns of this size, is your experience saying that, you know, it's probably worth this much money?
The, well, Dunstable was a little slo- uh, smaller, and I'm gonna say they were in the one forties. I actually ran into the town clerk, um, in Mendon. And we started talking, the gentleman they hired there has turned out to be an excellent candidate, and he uh, he took the job for one fifty-eight. And that's about, it was seven thousand.
It's smaller as well.
Okay.
So I don't think it's anything that we need to decide tonight, um.
I think the consultant could give you the the real firm handle you need to decide. How do you how do you get the candidate that we want? At the price that we can afford to pay.
The tough thing is too, is that funding that line item will have to do at town meeting, and if we hire somebody before that, how do we?
Yeah, you're gonna have to balance, huh?
Yes.
How do we do that?
How do we balance that? Yeah.
Um. So we're gonna have to figure out where that money, any additional money is coming from until town meeting.
That's it? Yeah, exactly.
Well, and at town meeting.
Yep.
Yep. Any other thoughts? Sounds like we'll just continue the conversation once we have a firm.
Yeah, I mean, I think the consultant will have to be the one to give us the, what makes the most sense. I mean, based on that conversation, we're in the one fifties, it sounds like, and possibly the one sixties. Based on size, and I don't know what the size differential will be, but I would estimate we're between one fifty and one seventy, somewhere in that range.
I just got a question for you, David. Your knowledge, experience. The amount of, the amount of pay a town makes, is that somewhat based on how much commercial business they have in town? That they can afford to not put pressure on the citizens' tax base?
Uh, so it's it's a wealth of the community too, you know, concrete, carlisle, that kind of thing. They don't want business. It's. They don't wanna stoplight.
Taxes taxes are good enough, yeah.
Systic visas, visas or whatever.
I think I was, I was doing some searching and I think I saw it was her twenty-three, twenty-four contract, but the TA over in Paxton, she was at one fifteen. That was a couple of years ago, but obviously Paxton's a much smaller community too, so. There there are differences, but.
I'm hoping Paxton won't bid us.
Uh, it's it's gonna be a tough balance on what, you know, the town can afford and, you know, what. You know, and the candidate that we want, so, so things we'll have to keep in mind as we keep talking about it.
And we're still not thinking that partnering with Paxton to have one TA is a good idea.
I don't know that that was.
I brought it up at one, I brought it up at one point, and everyone kinda said that. The time of the TA and what meetings they go to, and I I it was, I brought it up and and it got shut down pretty quickly, and I.
For me personally, it's not so much like, I mean, some of it is definitely that, but also I think it's a challenge. That they would be the t- would be sharing a TA with, in the Wachusett district.
Mm-hmm.
And so for me, if it were a TA outside of Wachusett, I might be willing to consider it more, but I think. Rutland especially, like, at a population of all but ten thousand, and I know the day-to-day, just even sometimes meetings and everything are crazy. And so I think it's really tough to share, um, a TA between ten thousand and five thousand.
That could be done, actually.
But I think maybe for smaller, smaller communities, personally.
I I I don't disagree with you, and just seeing, you know, what. A- and in a different conversation, but the responsibilities of the the town administrator, it. I I think what we had expected and what we maybe still expect based on the bylaw is too much for one single person. So, you you know, that's right there. I think there is just a lot that. That to me suggests at least having Rutland have their own, that regionalizing the the town administrator just to me didn't make sense. If anything, I think we could use an addition additional staff to help with. Get making sure that all the, uh, everything gets taken care of. That's, I mean, you read that bylaw, that's.
Mm-hmm.
So much responsibility on one person, and there's only so much time. You know, in a day, so.
Okay.
Alright, if no other discussions, we can move into our last agenda item, which is just the FY twenty-six goals and objectives. Um, we have the list of our. Twenty-five, FY twenty-five, um, goals that we had come up with. I know generally, in the past, we've had a separate, um, meeting specific to just going over just general goals and objectives for the board. Which I'm still open to if if the board would prefer to do that. I just figured with, um. You know, again, David being the interim and and this kind of being an interesting year with, uh, several transitions that. I wanted to see how the board felt about goals, um, you know, I don't wanna put too much as far as. Expectations for for the board, for things that are, we're just not going to be able to do, just because we have some, um, additional things, but go ahead.
As I say, if I may, I think that, um, until we figure out our budget stuff, doing goals is an exercise in futility, because we look at these goals. And last summer, when we did them, we had all these high hopes and we were committed to the investment that it was gonna take on the monetary side. And as the budget process came through, nobody wanted to talk about funding even our absolute basic needs, let alone anything else. And unfortunately. What I think for me, and I think the board is hoping for a lot of the goals and objectives, takes money, whether that's money to s- to apply for grants. Whether that's money, like, we need money and we don't have it. And so I think until or unless we figure out. Um, the funding side, I personally really think it's a little bit of an exercise in futility. We. Spent a lot of time in previous iterations going through HR policies and financial policies that we've thrown to the wind. And so if we're gonna do. A lot of this work as a board. I think we need the commitment on the side of of the funding that we need to do, personally.
I I a hundred percent agree, and I, for me personally, the, my main focus is having a successful budget season and budget year. And if that means that the goals even center around, um, you know, community outreach and education on where we're at and just. How, you know, these are the things that we'd like to do, and do you agree with this? But we also need your support. For the funding piece of it. If we're not willing, if we don't have the support from the residents. To fund these initiatives, then exactly what you said, Leah, it's it's, what's, why are we going to even consider? You know, doing anything with with these at this point.
It's a struggle because you want to know what you have to work with, but you also, in order to ask for money, you need to give something that we're looking forward to. So. I think it's it's a tough conversation if you don't know what the money is, but if you. Don't have the conversation of some sort of, like, what does the next five years look like? And here's what we're working towards, then what do the people have to vote on, right? And and so I think there's a mix there, and I think it is a little bit important that we go over. And come up with some sort of goals, even if it's more three years out to say, you know, here's what we'd really like to see in the next three, five years. It can be very general, right? Doesn't have to be, these are very, some of these are very specific goals, but some of these are pretty general from last year, right? Um. And some of these are not necessarily even monetary, like, some of these are are goals of how do we adjust this, or how do we rewrite a policy? And that doesn't technically take money to rewrite a policy, I mean, it takes time, which time is money, but you get my point. Um, so I I think that even though it's tough to do until you have the monetary, you have to do some of that before the monetary too.
And I think, I I I mean, I don't disagree, Alex, that in order to fund stuff, but I think w- we need to fund our basic operating budget. I think one thing. That we've heard, I've heard since I've been on the board, is the need for recreation space, and I, there's the. I believe this Weston Sampson is, had worked with, um, Karina and Nancy to. To devise a kind of a new plan coming off the heels of the last Fall Town meeting with the, um, municipal facility study. I don't know where this, where that stands, but something that has buy-in from, uh. All all walks of our populations, I think, could be beneficial. Um, and continuing some of the work, but I guess, uh, on, you know, the existing, just updating policies, I think that's been one of our kind of ongoing things for the past few years. Um, but again, I think there needs to be that commitment that we're gonna. Work to adhere to them, mm.
Also, in addition to that, I've heard from a couple of parents who are single parents. Who have children that they would like to enroll in these things, but it's it's hard for them to be able to do this because of the fact. That, you know, so, okay, so it's mentioned in here somewhere previously that, you know, discounting certain situations. So this might be something that we should look into as well.
Harry, any thoughts?
Yeah, um. I looked at what we did here last year. And I guess after going through the year, I look at this as like a wish list, not really goals. And to me. Goals by a board should be something that the town can see. If if, and it shouldn't be expansive. We should, in my opinion, the board should look at three to five goals. That make an impact in the town, the overall town that they can see. So I don't care if you pick one from facility, one from departments, one from board, but it shouldn't be a a laundry list of thirty-five or whatever items. It should be boiled down to three, three to five hardcore goals that the board wants to get done. The other stuff we can work on is we want to. That doesn't have to be a goal of ours, but I want. I'd be looking for three to five, and and I guess if each member of the board would kinda highlight what they think their three to five are, and then we get together and really hone down the three to five. Would be something that, um, I I would really like to see, um, versus something that we just throw stuff on the wall and hope it gets done.
Would the board like a little bit more time to think about some? More short-term attainable goals that. Would have an impact on town?
That might be of help.
A smaller, a smaller list, again, just given the the year, okay. How do, do we feel like we can have that discussion during a regular meeting? Or would you prefer a separate? Meeting for that discussion focused solely on? Goal discussion?
I think if we're gonna keep it to a select number of things, I don't think that's gonna be separate.
Uh, open meeting or separate?
No, open.
Okay. Yeah, I I think that. If we're gonna do goals, I guess I would say the town deserves to know what our thought process is.
Just to be clear, all of our meetings before were open, they were all televised.
Right, they were open, but we really didn't have anybody there, it was just us going over on goals. And so if it's announced, maybe we'll get more people here that we can get feedback on that. But yeah, I'd like to see it. Truly, you know, a board decision sitting here and discussing it at part of a meeting.
Okay. Um, what do we think about for timelines? How many, how long would you like to mull it over?
What does the chair think?
Uh, it's, we got whatever, I mean, the summer is usually a little bit more quiet, so, I mean, we've only got so many meetings left, we've got.
I was just looking at the schedule, 'cause I figured the August fourth would be probably consumed mostly with the the search firm, TA search firm stuff.
Yeah.
And then August the eighteenth, I thought at least one of us was away and not i- not able to attend even remotely, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I really think if we're doing something as big as goal setting, that that's, uh, all board member, um, participation, personally.
Yep, I agree. So I think we're looking at probably early as September second. Would that be enough time for?
Could we? Could we squeeze in some time at our next meeting? Just to figure out, not to go over the whole thing, but what the general consensus is. If like, I, we each make a list, we send it to, or to David and say, hey, here's what we think. This is what we like, and put together that so we have basis consensus, and then work from there.
And we can certainly have a an agenda item. I I would just want to potentially reserve holding that discussion if we end up running late.
I'm sure.
Um, but yeah, if 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 everybody's amenable to coming up with some ideas that. You wanna send in and we can have that reviewed as part of the packet, so we can have. Be prepared for for discussion on those items.
I mean, it could take a long night for the.
Right.
You know, but it may not either, so.
Yeah, so why don't we see how things go with the agenda and. If, uh, over the next couple of weeks, everybody can come up with, again, just some high-level topics for for discussion for for goals.
How many are we looking at? So we know, like, I might do three, somebody might do ten. So what are we looking at for a general, you know, general?
Uh, how, I I kind of agree with you, Harry, again, just given the year that we have and and. Again, agreeing with Leah, a lot of these are money-dependent, and I think that's very limiting for us right now. So I think just to keep it more high-level. And in some way attainable, why don't we say three to five?
Well, I think you have three to five, in my mind, three to five goals, and then a number of these things are more like to do this, right?
Right.
Some of these things are like, they might take a lot of time, but they're not gonna take significant investment, they're not gonna, so like, some of those things are not necessarily.
Right. Right.
Uh, they're still goal, you get what I mean, though.
These, I think, were also guidance for staff, like for, uh, town administrator and department heads, kind of to.
Yeah. Yeah, what's expected.
Well, yeah.
Right, like.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's.
What does this board want?
It's actually a very reasonable list for department heads to say, hey, what do what do we, what is the select board looking? For us to get done, I mean, actually makes sense.
Yeah, and I think if we develop our goals, then we can kinda push that down to the next level. And let them decide, you know, or give them feedback and get back to us.
Might be worthy of a ti- of a department head meeting. Speaking to David.
Not to constantly poll the town, but what does the town want? But really, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
It it's it's all about what does the town actually want, and what, I I, and I think. Yeah, it's hard for us to just say. And I hope that we're all listening to what people are telling us from the public, right, but.
Well, I think that's the hard conversation is, you know, I'm sure that there's plenty of people in town that have lots of ideas and things that they would like to see, but. Can those be accomplished without?
Well, any any goal is gonna take investment, I mean, that's the idea of this is to say, here's, you know, what we'd like to see, and then we put dollars with it to say what it's gonna take to get there.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
And, um, that creates a budget, and that's what you go to the town with. To say, you know, here's the things we'd like to do, here's what it's gonna cost, and then you also have a second budget, which is, here's what. It would have cost us if we didn't do all the cuts we did last year, and, you know, this is what it's gonna cost to run the town, and then you have the, or we cut everything and. You have nothing. So it gives us options for budgets, I guess, is the point there.
Uh, who do you want us to go back to?
Um, why don't you just send them through to Mika and to David, and we can just collate the the topics?
Would you put us a date, would you say?
Well, we'll see how the, how things go. If we end up getting, you know, multiple firms, we might need to hold off from the August fourth meeting, 'cause I agree, I think that's going to take. The bulk of of the time. So I would say we're looking at possibly the fourth, maybe the second, September second. But if we can just have that list in the next couple of weeks and just people can, you know, if you have anything new, of course, send it in, but. Something to to review in advance. Alright, um, any other discussion for tonight? Any future agenda requests?
One thing, we had talked about the, um, Wachusett area, I forget, like, leadership group or whatever for the regional school district, and I think we had. Kind of reviewed a draft of it a few times, and then it just kind of got put on hold with the election and everything, not knowing what was gonna happen with the board and whatever. If we can pull that, kind of revisit it, and then maybe work, see if there's interest from the other, um, community select boards, because that really is taking out the. Out the administrator piece, it's. Because that really is taking out the, out the administrator piece, it's really working with the electeds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to try to get back to that, because I know even from as a municipal rep, I've gotten some questions from others, from other select boards, which is great. But I think some of it is better questions that would be better answered at a meeting of a working group, kind of.
Okay, and I think um, I think this is one of the things that came up when I um, had met with Austin and he had kind of mentioned that. It would really need a a board champion to to push it forward, um, and make sure that things, you know, stay on track and. With, you know, re- outreach to the other communities and everything, and I I, again, with David being part-time, that. I I think it's something I see value in it, but it's, in my opinion, with given his limited time, something that I'm not sure that would. Be the best use of his time for what we need, um, so as part of that discussion, maybe we can talk about having a board.
Mm-hmm.
A board champion, if you will, that would wanna spearhead kind of some of the outreach or discussion or.
And I kind of viewed it as that, to be honest, because it's really a policy for with the elected groups and not the, I mean, the administrators and the administration.
Mm-hmm.
Already kind of have their own.
Mm-hmm.
Group together.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that seems to be working reasonably well, so, um, this is really just more to get the electeds and maybe, I can't remember if it included the FinComs or not, um. I know our FinCom bylaw is kind of particular about FinCom being able to.
Right, participate.
Um, participate in other things, but um, I know oftentimes they. Other communities, FinComs, that wanna be involved, so, and I don't remember the, all the details of policy off the top of my head.
Okay, yep, I will get that on a future agenda.
Dan, I just a quick question to circle back, um, I wasn't sure when the board wanted to put out an agenda, I know you guys were gonna talk about. High-level themes that David was gonna collate as far as the exit interview, um, I just had that in my notes and wanted to ask if there was any particular time you guys wanted to go over that.
Do we still need more time for some themes to to review?
Um. I was gonna just take them and consolidate them, that's, that was my plan originally.
Okay. Okay.
That all.
We got, have we got all five of the board?
No, I still have my, I still.
I think I still have mine also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll just check in with David on that, and while we have that information.
I'll get that too.
Obviously, we'll still talk about it as part of the TA process too, so.
Okay.
Just in general, not necessarily the.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Um, and for future agenda, um, I had reached out, um, or had the office reach out to FinCom to. Schedule a joint meeting, and I believe you said you were available on the second, correct? Um, to have a joint discussion on the town council policy that they had brought forward, um, you know, so. Putting that on the radar and seeing what potential um, modifications or amendments we wanna make to that town council policy. Um, based on um, FinCom feedback and also the um. New accounts that were approved and created at town meeting for the school. The money that we get from the school district for parking lot and field maintenance, um, updating financial policies, um. To basically outline how we see that being funded, um, to make sure that that's accounted for, that was another uh, area that Austin had mentioned. Um, to close that loop, so that we have that documented as well. So we'll have that, um, those topics on the second as well.
Seems like a good time to talk about budget then, if they're gonna be there anyway.
Um, yeah, I didn't, we didn't specifically talk about that, but we can certainly reach back out to to Darren as as chair and see if there's any. Budget-specific topics that while everybody's here.
They actually have a meeting on July thirty-first, so we could add that to the agenda to see if there was anything we'd like to talk about to bring back to that joint meeting. And then, um, they had also mentioned at their meeting last week that they would like to have a discussion with the board about um, their potential involvement in the TA search process.
Yes, yeah, okay. So we'll have a a little mini joint.
Yeah, I feel like us talking about budget, August fourth is obviously gonna be a very busy meeting, so that one's a struggle, August eighteenth.
Yeah.
At that point, I mean, if we're already gonna have them there at August second, or September second, it feels late to start talking about this, but. I mean, maybe we can talk about it quickly on the eighteenth and then follow up on the second as a, as a bigger group.
Sounds good, anything else for future requests? Alright, um, so we kind of talked about it already, but we have um, our next meeting on August fourth, which is when we will be doing the consulting firm interviews. Um, August eighteenth, um, which is the one that you mentioned, Leah, that I will not be present for, so I'll work together um, for that agenda. And then um, the September second meeting, which just is the Tuesday following Labor Day, so just remember that that's a Tuesday instead of a Monday meeting, hit that one.
Somewhere before you, but wanna get together with you for a while anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Um, is there anything else to come before the board, before we adjourn to executive session? Okay, then I, we're going to um, adjourn to executives, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for reason number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Subject, discussion of the property going through land court process, tax title, uh, to adjourn from executive session.
Soon.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alex?
Alright, second eye.
Wait a minute.
That's a.
Ledger I, alright, we will adjourn to executive session.